Charles Baer.
Here.
Dwayne Baer. Johnny Bruce.
Here.
Michael Douglas.
Here.
Dwayne Gibson.
Here.
Beverly Ball.
Here.
Tyler King.
Here.
Dwayne Kitts. Scotty Kidd.
Here.
Dr. Marlowe.
Here.
Sue Nance. Russ Yorick.
Here.
Larry Sharp.
Here.
And Scott Staley.
Here.
Eleven present, four absent.
I'd like to state that we do have a quorum. Folks looking at the agenda. Moving down to approval of previous minutes. You have those in your packet. Next week. No republic applications and approval. Packet. Community reports and minutes. We have budget finance. Insurance and personnel.
The insurance and personnel will be out by the end of the week.
Okay, very good, thank you. Approval of the budget amendments and funding resolutions. Those passed committee. Approved for payment of the month to travel credit card use. You do not have a statement yet, Mr. Mayor. Have you made arrangements yet to the February conference? If you're going to be going to that February conference, raise your hand.
I'll send out a text.
Yeah, we need, we need the. Report from County Fish and Water Department, including more of education.
Mr. Chairman.
Your report?
I've been noticing a trend with some, mostly E-911 report. I don't think we've received one of those in a few months. Can we reach, have a man to reach out and find out why we're not receiving reports from the 911 service?
Yes, sir. Any others?
Well, we actually, I seen it says environmental services. I think we've got a copy because I've been making footprints all evening.
Yes, it came after the.
And there was actually more highlighted this month than they are normally.
That's true. I'd like to also state that Mr. Atkins is here. Moving on over. Reports of organizations receiving funding from the county.
Mr. Chairman, a note on that, as my understanding, we just spoke about that. That'll be going through, can you give enough, what, what we're going to do on that?
As soon as Mr. Chairman gathers the information and everything, it will be sent to a committee, you know, to.
Determine who's?
Well, not to determine.
Just to?
Get the funding.
Okay, good.
Going after that.
I just thought I'd throw that in with, a little bit of that there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Initially, the shelter, we sent their coming. Finalized our coming to report tomorrow, so we should have a coming in the week.
Okay, very good. Mr. Chairman. Yes, all these others has not submitted. So we've got a wish about as long as you're working, it's not submitting.
They're monthly reports, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Some of them.
It's okay.
Some of them send quarterly. We get from the Chamber of Commerce, we get from the Civil Society. Every now and then, we get from the Library Board.
Some of them probably set up on a quarter report. Now, I guess that's probably, we probably need to update and actually have it then.
What did you have?
That it says, you know, four or four were at the end of, which means a quarter report. I want to add to that, Mr. Chairman, too, guys. We've been talking about these issues, about the nonprofit organizations. To me, the taxpayers are funding these bodies, these people. And we, as a county, need those reports so the people, the taxpayers knows who utilizing their money. We need to know that information.
I think you relayed that message clearly, Mr. Chairman.
I know, Mr. Chairman, I don't want to pick it, but I'm just saying that it's been, we've been talking about it for quite a while now.
Well, the thing about it, like I said, we definitely need to be labeling each side of it. Whether we get it on a monthly basis, a quarterly basis, semi-annually, annually. That way, we know for sure, okay?
We're happy to help them, just as long as they can show proof that they're utilizing it, that's, that's, that's what we need.
Very good. Okay, moving on down. Information. Other matters. Approval of the search department to sell a. Churned chip, police?
No.
No? To the Clinton Police Department.
Yes, sir.
You, you sent me, no, wait.
I'm sure that most people were aware quite happy about this summer with the issues of the alleged animal abuse. You know, one of our decades. I had, once I took office, I had four nationally certified canine hammers to review all the evidence, to review the videos, interview the hammer. They weren't familiar with the dog. And the explanation that I got was that sometimes dogs change, sometimes people change. And sometimes dogs and people can't work together as a team like they were intended to. I separated the team once I took office. And at this time, I do not have an individual that I feel we need to place that particular canine with. So Clinton Police Department, since 2018, has provided training for the Campbell County Sheriff's Office. Every Tuesday for probably forty-eight weeks out of the year, at no charge to Campbell County. They have a canine that passed away recently. They have a handler that can handle the dog, that would like to handle the dog. At this time, the dog is costing us forty-two hundred dollars a year in care and maintenance. And we, we're receiving no benefit from that particular canine. I'm a canine man, y'all know. I went through the blood, sweat and tears getting certified nationally. I'm all about, they're a great tool. But at this time, the dog is a liability to us as the county. We can't put him with a handler that can't handle him. We don't need to continue paying for this dog and food. We don't need to continue paying a deputy to handle this dog. Like I said, it's forty-two hundred dollars a year. And if the dog's not benefiting us any, I would ask this commission to grant a request to allow us to sell that dog to Clinton Police Department. And I talked with three of those four handlers about a price of what this dog would be worth at the age of this dog. If I remember correctly, the dog was donated by citizen, an individual, about four years ago. He donated the money for the dog to be purchased. Some of you all were probably on the commission, knew what that had. I, I would ask this commission to set the funds aside for a future purchase of another canine. If we get to the point where we can use another canine, have a handler with another one that can be a team. I can give you story after story after story of how the dogs are such a great tool. Saturday night, we had an individual on a bicycle to bail off on foot and hit the woods. Our deputy called for Anderson County's canine in minutes, we had that individual custody. He ran through the woods, down to the lake, and back up the other side, the dog tracked him. And we had that individual custody, probably had it now, from the time the dog arrived.
Mr. Chairman.
They're a great tool. I hope you all are dog friendly. They're a great asset to have. But at this time, we don't need this particular dog.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, question?
Sheriff, how many canines have we got staffed right now in our search department?
Considering the way a question would have to. We have one that is assigned to our school division, she's the one that I handle. We have another one that is a cadaver dog, narcotics dog, and tracking. And the one that we're considering placing with Clinton is a narcotics tracking and apprehension.
But your plan is to go back with that type of dog in the future?
If we grow to the point to where the yes we can, I would love to. It's a great asset.
Yeah, I worked, I worked with Darrell Long a few years ago in doing, you know what Darrell done in the county? And he got rugged, and that was a special dog. If you're familiar, I'm sure you are.
Everybody's not cut out.
One of the best tools that you ever had.
It's, it's.
It's amazing.
Scotty?
Sheriff, the question I have for you, the dog is about four years. It's just, you think it's probably because of the way the dog is, was trained? Or is it just because maybe it just don't jive with, with our people? I mean, what, what are you thinking, maybe?
Well, from the reports that the four certified trainers gave me, and their opinions were that dogs change, people change. You know, I mean, sometimes, everybody here's got a boyfriend or a girlfriend, you just don't get along anymore, so you have separation. And kind of the same way with the dog, you know, it, it happens. You know, if we could go back with a team that was an apprehension, narcotics, and tracking, I would love that. If something happened in the future, we just needed narcotics and a tracking, I would be inclined to listen and entertain that offer.
So the Sheriff's Department, Anderson County, they're interested in this dog?
Clinton Police.
Clinton Police.
Clinton Police.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, moving on down. Resolution for adoption of the State 401 Cape Plan. Zach?
So this would break insurance and next to now. We dropped actually the same regulation.
I will let Mr. Marlowe carry that, he's worked very hard on that.
You want to carry the sheriff's department?
If nobody else wants to carry it, somebody else will. Somebody will have to carry that, yeah. But also make sure it's put on there that that money is requested to set aside in that same motion Monday night. Sell the dog and what sells, the money sets in a fund.
Sets into, go to another source of the dog, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, good.
No, need to go back in the coffee.
Yeah.
You got that, Dan?
Yes.
Yes, very good. Zach, you got you? Okay. Mayor, you got four?
Well, we have about five. I think we have five ELD sign up in program down there. We have, we know one that definitely wants to use our money. We have another one that is working, we have one in a different aspect that we'd like to discuss. But we'll make sure that they'll still be on good terms if they use our money, which, that's not a problem. And we have two more that we wanted to explain to you later, and I'll, I'll sit down later and explain. So we might, you know, it's there to help if we need it, so we could go with the four.
Very good. Anything else? Any questions for the mayor?
I have one, maybe he might want to bring up, I think. Your office handling the home grant tomorrow night at six. I've had some people that called me about it. I think it's a great thing, so you might want to touch on it, Mayor.
Okay.
Since we've got some people got us on the internet tonight.
Okay. The home grant is to be administered by outside agency, so we don't have to. But we will be taking applications tomorrow night, Tuesday the 10th, I believe, at six o'clock at the career center. And it's for people of low to moderate income, on their own home, and need repair if they can't afford it. And they use a point system to assign the correct person to the money. So I think it's about seven hundred thousand. I've been to Jellicoe, I've been, I've been to other places, Jellicoe put up flyers. We put it on the WAF, we got an internet, we tried to spread the word as much as possible. We have called every person, I'll leave it out of the office, called them back, talked to them about it. If they're, or have somebody there for you. So tomorrow night, they take applications, and the next month, Tuesday night, they decide to.
Mayor, you may need to tell them what they need to bring. Now, you told me the warrant to do.
Yes, you must have proof that you own the home and the land sitting on it. You have your property tax paid up to date, and your income, that's pretty much it. You have to live there a year, you have to understand that. If you use this money, you have to lean on your home for five years. At that time, it comes off and you don't have. If you're trying to sell the home, that would be like that.
Mr. Chairman, so you actually pay this back as works are done? It's a whole interest loan, is this?
No, we do not pay it.
You don't pay it back, but it ties your land up for?
It ties up for five years, some investor can't come in, fix the house up, sell it, profit from the home. It's a long profit. So hopefully we give them help, I hope a lot of them.
This is not the first one that the county's done. We've been numerous ones, at least, seem like it comes around every four or five years. But there's been more talk about this, I guess because it's on WAF. And on social media. A lot of people's been calling me, I've run into a few people, and they say, you know, and I can't tell them. I said, this best to go down to meet with Randy, I think Randy's going to be the one that's handling it.
Randy's got all the information, call everybody today. So we, we kept up.
Oh, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of it.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Scotty, anything else?
No, I didn't say anything.
Oh, boy.
That's distributed out through the county, all.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you said seven hundred thousand dollars, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Now, my main question is this. You know, when you decided to run for county mayor, one of your heart contents were the MS. But we've heard some really somber and sad stories with a lot of the families. If you don't mind, can you, this is a workshop, can you give us just a little bit of a small rundown of how, how, how you're progressing through the MS? I think it's something that's very well deserved, that people need to know, to meet as well.
Scotty, if you don't mind, bring that to your, to your turn, okay?
Okay, I sure will.
Don't even get off key, don't even stay on topic.
That's fine, sir, it ain't no problem. Thank you.
Mayor, anything else?
Okay. I would like. Medical ones was commissioned, of course, this is fifty years. And I think your agency in Nashville, we had the last time, made it a mission here. And I know there's some kind of presentation that's with that. And I talked to Johnny about this earlier, I asked him, you know, I'm not much for naming anything or anything, but. I think this might be a special case, and I would, I'm going to ask you, I think, to memorialize, not name, but memorialize a portion of the road. From say, Lake Springs Road to just above that, a few schools, next crossroads. Those would be the three crossroads that we had traveled on, which there came out of. And it would be, I've talked to Ron Hillback about it, designing a sign where you will reach in. He said he could pay out his budget for that. And I would ask you to memorialize that section of the road, it does not change it, but as I have areas, it's just in memory of.
We do, okay. You're carrying David, and I'd like you guys to second that motion. Oh, yeah. I second that. Running and David. Second, because it ends up the question is.
You want to announce about Charlie.
Uh, Rusty, I'll let you do that. You and your partner. Mayor, anything else?
That's all.
Okay, so you got it, Zach? David, you have?
No.
You got it. All right, let's move on to the commissioners. Medical order. David, do you have anything?
Um, yeah, I'd like to keep you all updated, sanitation department, you don't mind.
Go ahead, David. Go right again?
I've got some good news across the board. Uh, we've listed bids for a recycle center recently, get the garage doors back up to the room, Mr. Ford Garage Door for Clinton. We've listed bids for that, and overhead door and lots of came back as low as the best bid. Contracted them, those doors have been ordered, they have been assigned, and we expect to have insulation of those between eight and nine weeks from now. Uh, those doors were completely gone, by the way, they were non-existent. There's open holes in that building. I don't know how long we have been, but that's in the process of being repaired. We have ordered lights, new LED lights for the interior of that building. For the recycle center and the garage aspect of that building where EDP works. None of those lights work. The metal halide lights, the old ones, they're all, they don't work at all. So we've ordered new LED lights for all of those. That's in the maintenance, we should have those in a week. All the trucks and all the equipment that's out there is now back up and running. All of them. I have right now on hand, with the exception of one small repair that happened today. I have five semi trucks in my disposal. Awesome, yeah, that's awesome. We, we took the literary of the new pile of lift loaders from Stalwart last week, or week before last. That's up and running, and all the brush guards and everything's installed. Everything's doing well with that. The excavator that we got from Stalwart is good. I sent the trash wrapper back for a keep the sun. That's going to save us about probably seventy-five thousand. And savings over the grab reverse of the sun. Uh, maybe we keep that tomorrow, about starting to burn our brush. We have a meeting at one o'clock. And we just want to be compliant, so I requested that they come up and fill in everything that I need to do. Uh, they had said that there have been some conflict in some of the policies and the forms that need to be filed previously. So I want to be compliant, so we'll make it a little more, the ones that would start burning brush and leave. And probably the best news of the day is today, we stand on our own two feet before a garbage move. Um, I had seven loads of trash, tractor trailer loads of trash run out today. That's all by Campbell County trucks. Mr. Mayor, while he's done a great job for us in his contract service, but he is no longer needed. He has been sent a letter in, in regards to. His efforts and thanking him for what he done for Campbell County, but saying that we were on our own now. And today, while it, just a few minutes ago, on this transfer station, there was a guy that was coming, and Monday Tuesday, Wednesday, he's going to sit and bring some trash. That's our busiest days. That's when we receive the most garbage. Transfer station was empty. This afternoon, I don't know. There was no trash left.
Good job, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, that's it. I mean, we're working, we're moving on, I'm working with Ron and the street department to, we're going to get a gravel. Pay it up there, so we can get out of mud. Now it's kind of down to, I mean, we're still working on getting the compactors are, are working well. We're going to be putting some more of those Campbell County mass fuel in the deal soon. That, that schedule is working good, and the semi truck to the landfill schedule is in play. I think we're going to be okay on that. We've got enough drivers, I've got seven class A drivers on staff now that. Bolted part time and full-time position, so I can, I can pull whichever way I need to, get somebody on the big truck to move the trash if I need to. So we're working on getting gravel base up there, and eventually concrete base, so that we can keep that completely out, out of the equation again. Even when we get a stockpile trash again, that eliminates that, that burden that we had before. So Ron's working really well on that, and we've got a lot of things happening, and it's going in a trend in the right direction. So I just want to give everybody a heads up. That we're now standing on our own two feet, move forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Well, just say. Go ahead.
Stony Forks compactor, are we about ready to put it in place?
We are. So my fuel truck that we had repaired, which is what we use to pull the compactor with, is coming back tomorrow.
Great.
I've got a guy that can do that tomorrow. And as soon as we get it back, we're going to be taking one of these compactors from Jellicoe, Moss River, and moving it to Stony Fork. And then we've got that heavy duty compactor at the plant out there that's going to be going into Austin. And that's going to be acting within the next two weeks. And we're just waiting on that piece of equipment so we can move.
We're going to do that in-house.
Yes.
Okay.
We're good.
Anything else? Scotty, anything?
I, I'll just have to say, congratulations on the, your track is, for job well done. Not only that, here it is January, and the two, two to three biggest months of garbage. And for him to sit here and say that, that's a huge accomplishment. And I say a job well done to the mayor's office and Commissioner Atkins, and the job that he's done in, in to, to get this thing under control. And a couple of things I want to ask him real quickly, Mr. Chairman, thank you, is, are you looking good? The complaints I get would be, you know, maybe the sheriff's department, the jail, schools, and cardboard. Can you give, elaborate on that just a little bit?
Well, as far as the cardboard goes, we've got an amount of cardboard inside the recycle center now. We worked, they worked at most of, I think, when I left there, we had probably seventy-seven bagels of cardboard. Uh, and you have to imagine that over the holidays, that was a big, that was a huge envelope. I mean, I don't have any time that we filled the inside up and then it ran over to the outside. And we had to clean up outside and move things inside. And that's just the nature of the holidays and the season that we went through. I literally have never seen, there is more traffic in that transfer station, in that tow string facility up there. On the day after Christmas and the, the weeks leading after Christmas into the new year, we're picking, we're all working, cleaning out the garage, just cleaning out their closets. There was more traffic there than there were on the main road in here. Wrong, they could have, if the state had done a study, they could have put a red light out there, kind of like I turned it in to the tow string facility. Uh, the cardboard is a, is a big thing, and we've got a handle on it. We, we've got seventy-seven bagels out there now, and we've got more available. And our, our recycle numbers are going to go up, you'll notice the influx of money's coming in for sale of recyclers here real soon. It's already started trending upwards, and we're going to be seeing that trend continue.
Anything else?
I say job well done and continue the good work.
Mr. Atkins?
Have you heard anything about Jellicoe and the commercial trash over there? Have you worked out anything with them?
I've talked to, specifically, I've talked to Chris Pritchard, Jellicoe has. What he having, at least in my mind, I'm not satisfied with what we're doing. Currently, if they have someone move out of an apartment, they're out, and, and they have to. You know, when people move out of those areas, apparently they leave all their stuff, couches, trash, whatever. And those guys are led to the task to bring those things, and that's where their need comes to, to bring it to the transfer station or to the Austin facility. We don't have the ability to lay this there. But I've worked with her to. She goes to Pritchmore scales, they're Pritchmore load, and they weigh it. And they snapshot the lightweight and the heavy weight, so we can get a pair of weight. And they send that to Holland, which in turn will invoice them, and it's net third. So we're doing the best we can with that, I'm not satisfied with it, it don't seem very efficient. But we're working with the best we can to try to make, let them have the same conveniences there. We have, we don't want them to have to truck that stuff over here when they have the, the need for that. So, and Jerry Sharp as well, I've talked to him a couple of times about his commercial business there. And he's working with us, and all those guys are willing to pay. They understand the procedures, the policies that the commission has set forth. It's just a matter of working through what's best for everybody, and we're going to find that happy place, and, but that's where we're at right now.
Mr. Chairman. Want to speak, Mike?
Yes. Mr. Atkins, I got a question about the mail out there. See if we want to go up to the top of you once they, we start burning that brush out there.
In theory, yes. Well, I, I say that because I'm going to do what's best for the county, and what I mean by that is money wise. And I'd like to get the biggest return I can on that mail. Whether it be five dollars a hundred or six dollars a hundred, I'm going to search for that happy place so that the county can receive the biggest thing for the vote. If that means stop piling it up the hill and letting somebody come in and bail it like we used to do, then I'll do that a hundred percent. Or if it means loading it in a container like we're doing now and hauling it across the street. Or if it means loading it in a container like we're doing now and calling it across the street, we'll do that. Uh, but, but my, I've got my thumb on the pulse of that, so that Campbell County is getting the best they can out of it.
One other question. Uh, the dumpster on water, that, uh, that area up there, does it wanna remain there?
I don't have a problem with it remaining there. Uh, we are not permitted as sanitation department to have a fast four dumpster at the water. But it's been, it's, it's been there. At some point, somebody said it there.
Okay.
We're having to live there. Yeah. Yeah. No, no, no. We're, we're having to live there. In fact, there was an incident, I think last week with some miscommunication about that dumpster. And, and, and once again, it's the same with water, we've got Waco, Fort Wells Springs, Trafalgar. Those are convenience centers that are set forth for the county and that's what we have on the floor, those are the convenience centers. And as, as long as I'm there, then my, um, my job will be to make a convenient for the taxpayers.
Anything else? Well, just talk. David, great job. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, David.
Don't you got anything?
I don't have anything. I think David may be being commended on the job.
I'm, I'm good. I'm commended. I just want, I just want everybody to know what's happening. And, uh, we're moving forward.
Dwayne, there's your mic here. I don't have anything. Fine.
I'm just commended by sanitation department.
Well, I'd like to say that, sorry, I'm talking out of turn, but it's not just me, but all the people out there involved in it and they're working. Everybody out there is working to make that place again and again better across the board. They deserve as much credit as anyone.
Dwayne?
Uh, I'd just like to say I appreciate everything you've done. Good job. Thank you.
Member? Tyler? Uh, Dwayne here?
Uh, Dwayne had, uh, texted me earlier tonight. I think he has stomach virus and he went home from work. That's Dwayne.
I only have just ten things tonight. I miss kids, guys, really. A couple of things, it's, uh, first of all, I want, uh, the county mayor to elaborate on the EMS situation. What he expects and what has been going on since he has been the county mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I think we've done well as far as the numbers, numbers are short. That's why we're ready to go to the full, full time process. The, uh, cleaning still stays the same. We can get the way you know, these through the EMS program. If necessary, uh, I'm gonna go to Jellicoe and see those, uh, here's the high school students over there interested also in what they're on the state. So we talked to those. It is probably this week or next week. We'll get them on. But this works out, we will have more drivers, which is what we need. We're paying the way too much dollars now. Plus, if we get a, uh, transport to over here, the VA transporters, the, uh, the Kid and Dice transporters and so forth. We'll be able to free up lands we have for emergency use, which is desperately needed. And if that occurs, hopefully, the, I call buses, the, uh, transport buses should make us month out of it. And if they do, then that's where I think we wanna have, Jellicoe Hospital, we're gonna have to have mud. And maybe on Jellicoe, maybe in the state of Texas, we're gonna have to have mud in the fifties for that spot. That's what I hope it will be.
Do you see Jellicoe opening back up, Mr. Mayor?
I get the, he, uh, last time I was there, they would do the punch list for the government and they were on the water circulation. They had it almost finished the day I was there. Uh, they have to meet the same standards as a new hospital because they closed. If it stayed open, it would've been grandfathered in a lot of the things that they have to fix. But because it's closed and stayed closed a period of time, it has to be open under the same standards as a new hospital. But they're working on that. And he says the end of the month, the administrator, I've been there to see. And I would go there again, but then learn to find out, you know, are we open? But he has to have a number of federal government for Medicare and health insurance. He cannot excel money. You know, we can't find the insurance for people without that number from the government. So he's hoping to get that anyway. That's what he.
Okay. Uh, as always, wanna appreciate you and Randy Brown and your whole staff for keeping the county updated on everything. And also wanna commend you on keeping the job issue in Campbell County alive and, and letting people know and giving good, uh, uh, attention to the people. They are jobs in Campbell County if you do wanna work. We, we appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, it seems to me everything's running, uh, as normal and it seems like things are running good on Highway sixty-three as far as getting the roads that, you know, uh, complete through the states, T-Dot. Uh, another two things, I'll, I'll elaborate on two things here that I think that we really need to focus on very severely bad is whether Sheriff, uh, Sheriff, uh, Bart was here or not. I think I've had people that work for the sheriff's department, you know, reach out to me. I guess because some of them feel comfortable about talking to me and giving me their, wanting my opinion about. We're, we're gonna have to, whether the sheriff tries to check his budget and could cut every penny he can or anything, Mr. Chairman, we're gonna have to look at doing something, I think it's our responsibility to, to, to work with the sheriff's department and the county to, uh, try to get these people more money. I tell you what's happening here. We come to, come.
I don't mean to cut you out, but remember at the, I think, insurance personnel meeting, you guys voted, you know, the, the request.
I know that, but I'm just wanna, this is the, the worst, I'm just wanna say, say how I feel about it, but go ahead. No, wait, I know and I know that, that, that's, I was going, I was gonna get to that, so.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, no, it's okay. So, so we're in the, we're in the process of, of making sure that they, what, what's so important here is this. Is, Mr. Chairman, and, and this body, I'm, I'm giving you my heart right now, what we don't want to happen here in Campbell County is for these people to put their hearts and their soul into this job. I'm talking about EMS, I'm talking about everywhere. I'm talking about the school system. I'm talking about the sheriff's department. Here lately, the sheriff's department employs, a, a few of them have reds out to me and I wanna try to, try to help them with that. But what, what I'm trying to say is something we don't want to happen is, we don't want to, for these people to work and then not get any pay rate raises or anything like it. You can go just down the, down another county and you get two or three, four dollars more on the air. We don't wanna lose our good people. We don't wanna lose the people that's lived here all their lives and put their heart and their soul in there, Mr. Chairman, and have to leave the county and leave their families. I'm just saying. So, so as this body, I think it's our responsibility and I know how most everybody feels the same. They got a heart just like I do and we need to try to help these people in the future. We need to do our best to.
Mr. Kid, uh, I was at the meeting the other night that you attended with insurance personnel and I think that you guys are in that direction, so I.
I appreciate it.
There again, when we start the budget process and those sort of debates that we can have at that time.
Well, we, we don't, we can talk the talk, but we have to walk the walk. That's just the way it is. And we got to keep our people at home and with their families and, and those people would not. I'm not talking, I'm, I'm gonna use the sheriff's department. They put their lives on the line every day, but they're doing it because they love their county, they love their people and, you know, they wanna work here.
I think you're, I think everybody agrees.
Okay. This is exactly not my district, but I've been, and I, uh, when you're in the first or the fifth district, it don't matter. I, I've worked for Campbell County, uh, as a whole, as a county commissioner. So I probably, I get a lot of, uh, what can I, how can I say this? I don't know. I get a lot of people in about every district. I try to help at where I can, but I also try to pass along to other districts too, Mr., 'cause that's, uh, the, the respectful thing to do to my constituents, foreign constituents. The thing about it is, is these, uh, commissioners in the fifth district know, know very well, and I wanna try to help them. We've got to do something to IBDL. We've got to do something for the roads up there. These guys know there's been an issue, going on issue and so come budget time and we can, any way at all possible, those people are taxpayers and, and, uh, Mr. Mayor knows what that road's like up there. We've got to take care of those people. I mean, we're talking about, and you know, we can help, we can help, uh, uh, Ron Deal back with this issue by funding, helping. We've got to, I would like, you know what I'd like to do? And, and I'd probably have to get, reach out to, to Ron. We probably need to, uh, out a number, talking to the fifth district commissioners too. Somebody can probably maybe get some kind of idea about what it would take, not just to patch those holes, but do the road. Now, the, the problem that you're gonna run into here is the ATVs are really hurting that road right about. It's really ain't a whole lot we can do, but we can make an effort not just to patch it, but we could probably go in there and try to finally, once and for all, get that road paved. Do you all, you guys agree, Mike, with that?
Well, okay, Scotty, I will say this and then during that we'll, we'll move on, but that's something that you need to speak to Mr. Deal back about. That's, he's road supervisor.
Oh, I know, but I'm willing to help. I'm willing to try to give him some more money to do that too. I mean, I hope this body agrees with that.
Okay, well, that's something we can break up the budget cycle. Anything else?
No, that's, that's about it for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Zach?
I've got several things here. I think on the number three is what we are, but, um, so the general standpoint is that the waters and the, uh, just so you keep it posted, um, we're probably certain ways to handle it right now. Uh, there's a chance in a few weeks, I'm telling you, the John Paul is doing the road, which is, I'm just, I'm just, um, pleased. Now I still have, uh, we're, uh, we have the fourth of the current resolution, which I think is how the transfer system will be. That is hopefully, uh, properly, just by the, uh, uh, and, and the, uh, motion.
Anything else?
Thank you. Uh, as soon as we're here, rest and get forward.
Mr. Chairman, I guess one of the biggest things we, that I have on my agenda is actually the hearing of the veterans of fire officer. I'll be bringing that to the commission, hopefully, Monday night or Tuesday night. We won't be having, we won't be in session Monday night because of the holiday. But, uh, I look, I hope that everything works out good. We got five great candidates. We're gonna start interviewing them all night. If anybody's wanna be here, we're gonna be upstairs. Uh, starts at five. We'll have a break at six for the planning commission and then we'll come back in at six thirty. Correct me if I'm wrong, Amanda. And then we'll end up at, uh, seven thirty with the last candidate for that night and then we'll start again Wednesday night. So hopefully we'll have somebody present to you all for a vote, kind of, Tuesday night. Uh, and I'm gonna put that on the agenda. I don't think I'll have to spend the rules, but you know, under rule thirteen.
Exactly.
Wednesday, I'm sorry. Yeah, we won't, yeah. I apologize. We'll start tomorrow night at five and six and seven. I'm sorry. Soon send it out to everybody. We'll make sure everybody was in, but if you cannot attend, represent your district. Please get someone to attend for you, 'cause I want five members present while we're doing this.
Is the planning commission tomorrow night? I mean, Wednesday?
Wednesday night.
Wednesday, okay, good, good.
Uh, the presenting of the plaque for WIT, it came out of the Tennessee County Commission Association. Uh, at that point in time, I was the president and Charlie's supposedly gonna be here Tuesday night, six o'clock. He's our director, most of him's known, to present that to the family. We just didn't wanna do it at the time of the WIT's day, but I think that's suitable. That's fine with you, honestly. One of the things, and I brought this up to attention about maybe a month or two ago. We need to try to look at, uh, the county commission need to look in the endeavor of purchasing one of these LED lighted information signs for the county. And that's not just for used in one department, but that's multiple departments, whether it's road department, sanitation, the recreation department, health department, wherever. Uh, I seen the great nation of this good in COVID times. And then we've had some problems in sanitation that we had to shut down and a lot of people made trips that was uncalled for. So I'd like the commission, and I'll bring it up to a motion, that we look in for endeavors and purchases and if we can find the fund and purchase one of these signs. And we'll decide where it's gonna be housed at. Maybe best be housed at the road department, but we might have to do that during the budget cycle. But I think that's real well needed. It's the signs that you see when you're on the interstate that says, you know, detour and they flash and the signs can change. Uh, I think a lot of counties are buying into that. I'll be calling a waterline committee meeting as soon as we get all this took care of. It's been a hectic, very hectic month already, but we need to get back on basics. We need to get, start meeting with OSM and, uh, our communication committee. Uh, I'm gonna be calling a committee, a meeting for it. We've got some people that's been, I believe contacting the mayor's office, they've been contacting me. I want to know when they're getting internet. Uh, some's already getting ATTs, I already run them by the, the Demery area. But we need to sit down with those entities and have kind of like a open forum and let them kind of let know where everybody's going. I think it's beneficial to us as well as our citizens and those entities. And I'll bring those entities that I know of. I think, uh, probably Campbell County's gonna have numerous of, uh, and they may not want them, but they're gonna have numerous of communications, internet sites and different places to, some will have one and some will have multiple. But we did the best job we can, I think, the committee has and the commission. But I think that's all I have. The biggest thing is that veterans fire officer. So, uh, just bear with us the next two days and hopefully we get through this. Pray for us. It's a big undertaking and I appreciate all the members that's had a chance to attend.
Chairman, question for him. Commissioner Ork, you have, you have spoke about a sign. I know that Commissioner Stanfield got a sign. What, what exactly, if you go to a little bit more elaborate a little bit?
These signs, Scotty, are mobile signs that you see T-Dot use, uh, construction sites. They're mounted on a trailer. You hook to them. Uh, I think, I think LaFollette has actually rented one at times. And it'll say detour or it can say, the hospital had one during the COVID that said that they're giving COVID shots. You can change that signage, but it's needed in place. And I see a great need. EMA, you know, we have recs that's happens and it, it will help deter a lot of people from certain areas. We're getting ready to open this, hopefully in the next few months. We'll be opening up to White Bridge Park for, uh, campgrounds. And we have tournaments out there. There's all kinds of uses for this.
You're probably not talking about a sign that's thousands of dollars.
It's, it's pretty expensive.
It is?
Yes.
Okay, we need to think about the raises for the people too though. Thank you.
That's all, doin' budget process?
Yes, but I wanna request that from this commission come Monday night that we start looking for that. I mean, it's not gonna be for one department. It's gonna be multiple departments. If the mayor decides he's wanting to have some kind of get together and he wants to put a sign down that, that they're having a job call.
I, I'm getting real humble on you. I'm forth something like that, but I need to think about the people that's working here too.
Does that need to question Scott about the sign though?
Uh, no, really, I'll accept it. I'll accept it.
Okay. You still have the numbers for?
And I do feel for the employees. I think we brought that to the table the other night and I have, I've been here sixteen years and I think, about every year I've been here, we've requested, uh, increases in, in, in pay for the employees and I've always been an advocate for that. But now, I will say this, if you want employees to have more money, gotta watch what you're spending. Bottom line.
That's, you, you're talking, talking language that I need to hear. You're, you're, you just now brought something up that, you, you know what? You're a smart man.
All right.
Mr. Bruce, I appreciate the commission and I appreciate what the sanitation department, uh, passed by there every day. Those guys and ladies are doing a wonderful job and I appreciate it. it.
Thank you. Derek? You sure? Okay. Scott?
Don't worry, it's, it's, okay.
Okay, guys, I think, Monday night, what I'd like to do is Rusty, you and Charlie will be up front, and then Jack and Zach, Derek and David, you guys will be up front too, okay, do the approximation of what we had. Amanda, keep with the mayor, so we can get something in writing, okay, to read off.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yes, we have, yes, yes, we have to give that, explain that, that first thing. I think that's getting to care of us there.
Can you give us a second?
No, no, just something, yeah, so, Jack, raise your hand. Yes. Okay. Mr. Bruce, Mr. Bruce, will we allow citizens three minutes to speak and two minutes for any questions?
All right. I'll see.
Yes, sir.
I should all receive an email with the video, record, you know, complex issue, I'm here for a vote of no confidence on Elijah Klein, who's the medical examiner in Campbell County. Now, the medical examiner is potentially one of the most powerful people in the county, he has the power to go into a hospital, pull up any medical records, question any doctors, something that will take months or years to do through a court, I mean, it's basically impossible for anybody else to do. The reason he is, is he's a watched off over the medical malpractice, he's the one that stops, he's, he's the executive officer's cop to the hospital, that's really important. Apparently, Dr. Elijah Klein, he also is directing any investigations toward any death in the county, he's one of the docs, he's a word on it, and anybody going to him, well, he hasn't done that, he's just, as far as I can tell, you know, all I've heard, that he's never performed that job, he's a paperwork guy, rubber stamping whatever anybody else says, but I had a problem with the cause of death on the, on the death. It's all hanging on cousins, and it's undisputed that my dad, Oak Jackson, went to the hospital, pneumonia, went, underwent a surgery, unnecessary surgery, and went into renal failure, which, and was put on life support and transported to UT. Now, his death certificate says frontal lobe degeneration, now, there's CT scans in hospital records, now, send the email to Amanda, how about you, have it, send the attachments of the medical records up, excerpt, there's like fifteen hundred pages of the medical records, they give you the highlights, and it's undisputed, in fact, Dr. Klein, he also agreed, once pressed, that those were the essential facts, but refused to work on the, he's called judicial review of the cause of death, he said, among other things, that the death certificate wasn't important, it was just there to help the family, and that was on hand, the cause of death, that was it, the purpose stood, but that's not true, of course, it's official document, they say government, government is a machine, and you give false information, you do a machine, it's totally great, but he also, how it had to say he's arranged, he stated, this is recorded, it's not recorded audio, which you can breathe as adverse drug reactions, unnatural death, somebody goes up to put an IV in your veins, and you die from that drug reaction, it's a natural, it's a man-made, right, place, we all know that pretty much, that's just established fact. He says that once it's on the property of the hospital lines, he considers that a natural death, he says that, kind of, doctors just wouldn't do that, they're something, and if it, he also says that overdose from opioid, I see it's an opioid death from the, the surgery, unnecessary, just a, a new piece of, kind of, aside, that, oh, it was impossible to have a death from opioid overdose, there was no such thing, which is crazy, that goes against everything in the middle, he's just going, and just goes on and on, just some really strange stuff, and he's had comments that, if it's natural, that's the sound of a psychopath, that's serial, where it's natural for people to prey on, on people, that's a homicide, anything that man does to another man causes death, or even the person does it to himself, a suicide is not a homicide, it's not to be accidental, premeditated, or, ah, what, and I go to some water hotels, that's to be determined, but it's not natural, so he's been covering that for the hospital for twenty-five years.
I'll wrap it up, those.
Okay, I'll try it. Rather watch the video, but I can have another second, there's something else, the committee you know about, you know politics, you know, the cause of death, there's, anytime there's a group that is dispossessing, not under the law, or has created the law, or created something beyond the law, that goes against the Magna Carta, and Bruce, okay, we ran a common ancestor of the William Martin Magna Carta, no one's supposed to be above the law, but guess how many medical malpractice suits have been in Tennessee, say in the year two thousand eighteen? I think there was, I'm dumping, I'll get my papers back, but it looks like eleven hundred cases in Circuit Court of Campbell County, this district, I'll see, I'll find each one if I can, there were zero medical malpractice, unless it's because medical malpractices set themselves up, or something called the Tennessee Health Law, where they can't be sued without a medical expert, three months until they're sued, you have to find a doctor, but the state was surrounded states, and they have seriously come to U.S. New Orleans, they're helpless to act against all, all the lawyers have all, the sheriff's department's down country, can't beat anybody to look at these medical records, because that's what, that's what Dr. Klein says, what Dr. Klein says gives you a key to the name, which doesn't matter. So, we are surrounded, I mean, by hospital owners, now, how many times does it take for somebody to be out because of their disbaring, cover up a homicide? Once, once, somebody does that once, and you're off the regulations, you're off the reservation, and the county's liable for twenty-five years for medical malpractice, but I was thinking about this, and there's, I know this, you guys do great most of the time, you'll say, what does other counties have that we don't have? One, it's complimentary, so, once you fire them, you can, you can, you're a physician, apparently we haven't used it twenty-five years, you can defund it, two, you can get like FBI doctors and trained, and actual forensic coming here and training people, training the, train sheriffs, because they haven't been able to do the investigation, they call the FBI, they're a rubberback to the phone, basically, they have been decreased quickly, that's a problem, but there's a third option that I just thought of, that's the other thing, and this would be radical proposal, um, I'm here in the vote of no confidence, but if we, you, the original body here, required a law that will make all medical records public information, and online, where people can see them and review them, against state policy, against national policy, as part of a safety net, where everybody relatives, everybody relatives can see these records, you would reform, this would be the mega, although people are scared, and, 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 and,[1438.66]